I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, we have roll call, please.
Tom Tyre.
Here.
Craig Koeschel.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulham.
Here.
Wyler Surt.
Here.
You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our May 7 meeting. If you've had a chance to review those and look for either amendments or an okay to approve. Make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 7. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First thing up, Mr. Augustus here tonight from EMA. I believe he wants to talk to us. John, if you want to sit down here, I think first of all, you need to reach somebody. Turn on the microphone for him here.
Yeah, John.
John, he's too... John's a...
He's technically challenged, right? More than that.
More than technical.
I'm glad you went alphabetical.
Did the light come on?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
August.
Is John the first letter in the alphabet?
Yeah. John was talking tonight about the siren that's located out at Hanonutman Park and with our construction going on out there.
Exactly.
The need to...
You guys seem to be in a hurry to get this done, but anyway.
Yeah, kinda.
We were informed that the pole, the siren needs to be taken down, the pole taken out, and set aside until the ground is set. And then re-put in, the pole put back in the ground and then put the siren back on. And I think, talking to Jeremy, it's probably going to be located near the concession stand or something and then just run the electricity off of there, I believe. So, still don't know what that location is, but Jeremy was figuring that out. Now, we have a quote to do that. And the quote to do that using Roic electric was $5,800 to take down and to put back up. And of that, I went and talked to commissioners several weeks ago. They are willing to pay a third of that, or $1,934 of that amount, which leaves $3,866 that I'm here to see whether or not the city will cover for taking down and disassembling and then putting it back up.
I think it's just an expense of building the park. Something has to happen. Do we even need an approval from council members or just can I... Might as well, while I got council here.
I'll make a motion to approve $3,866.
$3,866.
$3,866 for removal and reinstallation of the fire or the...
Pole and siren.
Pole and siren.
Can we, by chance, paint out a low public safety?
Yeah, let's be polite to fire.
It's fire. It's tornado, you're right.
That is tornado, Tyler.
Nice try.
The location of the pole won't really move all that much, it's just giving it out of the way for construction.
Yep.
If you put back in, relatively close where it is now, fed out of that building, so there's not going to be any change of coverage as to what it's covered now. The big thing is probably late June through maybe early fall, at the latest, that siren will be out of commission, depending on either temporary power supplied by AEP or if we would happen to get a concession stand, we'll be able to...
So what fund does it come out of? I suppose Hanonutman Construction Fund. Okay, then I'll second it to come out of that fund. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John.
Okay, and the only thing is, I will work with Jeremy because we... Because it's going to be down, we don't want to take it out a week early.
One minute early, mhm.
But then again, we want to make sure that we know ahead of time so we can, Roic can, they can plan to make sure they're in there and get it down.
Right.
Quickly, so, Jeremy, I'll get with you, okay?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing I want to discuss... Continuation of our discussion from our last meeting when we tabled the Second Street streetscaping. Since then, Jeremy has done the locate on that water main, and Jeremy's done a lot of work as far as laying out the, where everything would go. I believe that Max and Brian have walked the area with Jeremy. I don't think Melissa was available to do so, and she's out sick today. Was there anyone else that walked it?
No, just three of us.
Okay. I walked it with Jeremy, and basically Jeremy just went out there with spray paint. Spray painted the spot where every tree would go, where every light would go. One thing that I think we had wrong at this last meeting was how many lights are going to be out there, Jeremy, it's a total, how many? 10 lights. Staggered back and forth, just kind of like what we have over here instead of eight. Actually, yeah. Well, I think, before, last week, we were talking like five or six or something like that, and I knew that was wrong. So, with that being said, we never did finish, we were at a point where we were having a motion to proceed with the planned streetscaping. However, we didn't have a tree designated, and I don't know, Jeremy has talked to Harlow, the people that do, that did the ones down here on the plaza, and they gave him a list of different trees, and I don't know if that's who we're going to work through on this, but it's an option, and if so, they have several of them that they could recommend that would be good for streetscaping purposes. To be determined later, I guess, Brian, that's on... Do you have anything you want to say this evening, Brian?
No, I think, just, one of the things that I also wanted to make sure was that they, like, there was a cost analysis, which I think Jeremy did send that out. That was one of the things we asked, but I think is, how much can we do with the budget?
Yeah, Jeremy had, he emailed this to me, and I think I emailed it to all the council members, replacing 800 feet of sidewalks, form for a brick band. The width of the brick band to be determined, which ultimately we determined a two-foot wide brick band, and 10 light poles, nine or 10 light poles. Electric estimated, which he rounded to the high side for safe estimate. Labor to remove the green poles that are out there, and again, he says down here, a guess only. So for the sidewalks, a two-foot band, the light poles, the electric work, and the labor to remove the old poles, that came to $177,400. And then we added in for trees, grates, et cetera, we added another $7,000. So, we're at roughly $184,400. That's not a firm estimate, that's not a quote from anyone, but that's Jeremy's best estimate.
All those estimates I gave you, they are high.
We've heard that before. No, I'm just picking on you.
You know, the light poles are high, the light pole numbers, I don't know what's light pole cost per, now we're paying for light poles, so there's some cushion there. There's some cushion in the crane, there's some cushion in the banding, there's cushion all the way through, but, you know, don't think that you'd go doing that a whole block, but I feel very comfortable with what you have, largely there, not the whole block that you would be alright.
Actually, I guess...
What is our total, or what we have allocated for, is that the $217,000? What do we...
The original number I gave you before for the band was $217.
But I mean, how much money have we...
How much we have.
That we have.
The last item was redevelopment and...
The Second Street streetscapes, I have $40,000 coming out of the common council, 60 from Riverboat, 60 from redevelopment, 60 from Adams Community Foundation.
190.
190.
Okay.
And Jeremy did, Jeremy did email me some quotes here, I guess, actually. You got a firm quote from Roic for installation of conduit conductors, photocell contact, contractor for 10 new LED decorative fixtures. Is it 10 or 9 that we're putting though? Whatever. 9?
How long will the measurement come out?
Okay, well, for 10 of them, his estimate was $16,000, and that was a written estimate from Roic. And then we got the firm estimate on the lights, which we know how much those are per light. And trees and tree grates. An email that Jeremy had sent said to purchase trees and grates, you're looking around $1,600 per tree location. To purchase trees for planning before next spring. That was just the grate? Well, it says to purchase trees and tree grates, that's what you have. $1,600.
And how many trees are we looking at for this block?
Four.
Okay.
And one of them, if you, I don't know if all of you have the handout from the last meeting, but one of them is actually in one of the bump out areas on the alley.
Mhm.
And then the other three are in the sidewalk.
And then Max is getting a little more involved in the meeting.
Come on, Max.
I don't want to leave her out.
No, I'm good. No, I'm gonna need that, I think, they, they were here twice before, they did a lot. So, with that, I guess I would entertain a motion to proceed if somebody would be inclined to make that motion, and then one of motions made and seconded on this.
So, we're just doing what Decatur...
Yeah, everything that's listed within that, yes.
So it'd be, we're looking at $184,400?
Roughly. Again, some of that is last, just estimates that Jeremy has made himself, it's not firm quotes.
They're estimates off of contractors, but they were my estimates.
Right. So we should be good. Should be enough to exceed, basically, I think.
Does it include the bump outs on the alley or not?
It's just concrete.
It's gonna be a little bit more, I don't think it's gonna be a huge amount, is that's more discouraging? You know, you won't get a lot of money in curbing, it's just the end. I know more once you guys decide exactly what you want to do, and I can decide that with a couple of contractors.
Keep in mind, if we do these bump outs, would either of those alleys then be accessible by vehicle? I don't think so, because the one's gonna have a tree in it.
Not really. They're only as wide as the opening of the alley, which is only about 9 feet.
Yeah.
A car would fit down through there, but with this west alley, or excuse me, with this east alley, you already basically designated that for pedestrian.
Uh huh.
Once you get this done, if you do the bump outs on both sides, you may want to consider that east end.
By way of ordinance, yeah.
By way of ordinance, just to match the other side, so you don't get somebody trying to turn down through there and end up in the bump out or end up in the tree and such. It's just something that you have to look at once the project's completed, because you think, gee, guys.
Does everyone understand that, what we're doing when we, we're basically be closing two alleys to vehicles by doing these bump outs? The one by Sherwin-Williams, and like I said, the one over here, I think we've already done by ordinance, however, we, it just didn't work out originally until, I think Jeremy's kind of waiting to see what happens with that old Woodwings building before he goes into that alley and completely repaves it and does everything.
Well, once you redo the front, the sidewalk and the entrance and stuff to that, the sidewalk itself and entrance to that alley, you're gonna be able to correct a lot of issues that you're having with that alley, the drainage and such, and if you go through and repaint it or whatever you choose.
And as we, as we build out these bump outs or whatever, I would assume you would install the bollards?
Possibly, yeah. See, with the bump outs in there, not closing those alleys, you're taking basically the turning radius.
Away, yep.
Away from those alleys, so it would be very difficult.
How will you guys remit this down?
It would be difficult to do... It would be difficult, see, that bump out would come out basically to the edge of the parking stall. So, you take a straight line coming off this building, kind of bump out, bump out through here, same thing on this side, you're basically, you're taking that turning radius off of that alley. So you're almost gonna have to close this or do something to restrict that, because if you don't, you're gonna have cars coming over here, they're gonna be across the center line.
Big sharp turn.
Trying to get lined up to get into that alley. Or they're gonna be coming this way, and they're still gonna be challenged to get around.
It's closed that way now.
Come back that way.
How are you gonna remove snow down the alley? Because you're already closed, can't use Madison anymore.
Everything's changed. Yeah. So... We're just having to adjust to it to best with Ken, because like I said, here, here's a better picture. Most generally, these bump outs come out about nine feet, eight to nine feet, which is the edge of that parking stall. Depth wise, so you still have the same, the width of the street, the width of the street, just like you do now without hitting a parked car if you're driving down through there. I guess, what's the purpose of that?
Aesthetics.
No, it's safety.
Slow down.
Safety.
Pass the parked car to see if cars come... Where's the tree gonna be in the bump out on that thing?
I don't know. It'd be about right in here.
Is that gonna be planted over any utilities?
No, the actual water main is just not far off the curb on this side, and there's a four inch runs down through there, which will be in con, in possible conflict in two locations with the trees. You know, if you choose to do all that and proceed forward with the plan, we'll just have to work around the conflict. There's a couple options, one is very intense, the other one is, kind of dig and poke and prod and hopefully we can get, we can get by the water main itself and get it planted, because you don't want to plant it directly on top of it. You know, you're gonna cause problems for the tree and, and the water main is the tree root.
Do we have any bids for, to put these trees in boxes to where they can't let the roots go?
No.
Into the foundations? Haven't even looked at that.
There, there's a tree, the tree locations that would be in conflict is down here towards Becky Cochran, and then down in front of Fifth Third Bank.
Well, this map you have doesn't have a tree by Becky Cochran.
Yeah, we downed it at General.
Yeah, one is the bump out, and then Fifth Third.
Oh, sorry, there was one there and then...
You know what? That's the alley. Jeremy, uh... And that's Fifth Third.
So, so we would have one conflict with that.
Yeah, look at this, sir. This is the, this is City Hall's been for, this way.
So the, right there would be one conflict, which, like I said, it's workable either way. We may just think we'll actually work to make sure we don't cause future problems there.
My feeling is that the design committee did a lot of work as volunteers. They did a lot of research, and Jeremy and I have talked this week, Jeremy's good with trying to work around it, yep, there's gonna be some new conundrums that they've all encounter going forward with snow removal. That's like Phyllis said, snow removal in the alley. There's gonna, there's gonna be some new things happen, but we have Decatur Main Street, we have a design committee, this is their recommendation, Jeremy's okay with it. I'm looking for a motion.
I just want to make one comment, and I don't want to throw wrenches and things, but I'm all right with the design committee, I think they did a great job, the design looks good to me, they want trees, I'm fine with it, but doing both sides of the street, are we cutting ourselves short when we have a very large project going out on the other side of town? Stretching to go get the funding to do both sides. In turn, I understand this side needs to be done, the sidewalks all cut up, I tripped on it the other day, this one's a mess. But, does that other side necessarily have to be done now before we actually get that other project complete?
I think it's more in tying all the lighting together than it is anything, and we can't put the lights in without doing the sidewalks.
We can do one side of lights without doing the other side of lights, so, correct?
The one that gets conduit across.
But, am I mistaken, isn't this $190,000, it has been specifically earmarked for Second Street?
No. I think she was getting it from different...
It's different, but it's...
But she has it all earmarked for.
But it's all earmarked for this, I know the $60,000...
190.
Was budgeted last year.
For this year, actually.
For this year, and the $60,000 was designated from the Decatur...
The redevelopment commission.
Sure of that purpose.
And that got us over the hump to get to where we can do both sides, once redevelopment commissioned.
So what was the city council budget for this project?
Read off, read off.
Well, what we had for Oak Ridge Streetscape is going up, you guys committed 40 or 100,000 from council funds and from Riverboat.
Is what we allocated last year to do this project.
Right, it was in the budget for this year.
You got 30 remaining from the original foundation.
30 remaining out, foundation. And then redevelopment approved, just went up to...
Yeah, 30 some thousand settled down at the foundation, 100 was budgeted, 60's from redevelopment.
I guess this, my biggest concern is, is we have a very large project that's gonna need to be completed before, so make it play ball next year, and things are coming in higher than we've indicated already.
It worries me too, Tyler, it really does.
But none of this funds could be used for that, in theory.
But the council wants to...
The 30,000 that the foundation could not, and neither could the 60, the 100 that we budgeted for this could be...
Which basically means you don't do it this year. We don't use that 100.
And the goal is, a block, a block, a block, to get to that...
Five points.
Five points when we get there, so it flows. And there are portions, again, and that, we'd love to do it all, the ballpark portion we've done. We're not going to do it all this year. The next school, next season, but... The goal this year is to get ball fields made and kids playing there next year. The parking lots, lights, all that's coming later, as far as pavement. Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve here what's been presented tonight for Second Street between Madison and Monroe, of an estimate...
Main Street Design, you mean.
Right, of an estimate of the $184,400.
And I'll second. Have a motion and a second, and on this here, I want to do a roll call vote if we could, Phyllis? Rather than A and A.
Cam Colley?
Yes.
Craig Koeschel?
No.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulham.
Mine's strictly a budget, if I must say no.
Wyler Surt?
Yes.
So we have three yes, two no? So by a vote of three to, the streetscaping has been passed. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, next item. Madison Street. A year ago, roughly, we made some rules, I hadn't even made a year ago, I don't think, made some rules for Madison Street, for the usage of Madison Street. Now, we have a sound system down there that we didn't have last year, and with weddings, class reunions, various other functions that are, whether they're public or private events, I would imagine that we may want to allow people to use our sound system with rules. What, you know, we don't need to pass this tonight, but we need to put some serious thought into what those rules would be for the use of our sound system, and also a fee for the use of the sound system. That sound system is real simple to use once you get into it, but everybody, we, you know, somebody, if, if, if something, there's gonna be a wedding on the plaza, someone's going to have to be able to go down there and help set it up. Turn it on, lock it up.
Somebody's gotta be there, right?
Yep. Just to get it started, once you're, once you're in, it's really simple, Jeremy took Melissa and I down there the other day, you can, you can, for example, there's gonna be a function on the plaza the night of the sculpture tour unveiling, that hasn't had nothing to do with the sculpture tour, it's a company picnic, and it, and it's only gonna have maybe 75 people or so, and they're gonna have it east into the plaza in front of the American Legion area. They are gonna rent our restrooms, and they probably want to use our, our sound system. Well, now while the sculpture tour's going on, they're gonna have dancers out there in the middle of the street, want to dance to their own music, not to the music that's on the plaza, so you literally, you can turn the music off on the one end of the plaza, I mean, it's very, very, pretty easy to use once you're into it, right, Don, Jeremy?
If you can use the smartphone, you can run that sound system.
Yeah, yeah.
You're next to them.
Yeah. This past week, last Thursday, Melissa had music playing while the farmer's market was going on, and, don't, don't put this in the paper, Bob, but I got a phone call from Missy Burkholder, who had a client in there, and they were, you know, negotiating, negotiating on a house or a contract, whatever, and Missy called me and says, hey, Ken, can you turn the music down on the plaza, we're having a hard time carrying on a conversation here? So I called Melissa, and she's, matter of taking a button, going to turn all the speakers off that end of the plaza, just had it down there where the farmer's market was, so it's real simple to use, once you're in, but, again, I don't know, you know, what we want to charge and how we want to, you know, I, I kind of suggested to, I think it was Jeremy or Melissa, that if someone's gonna rent the plaza for a class reunion or a wedding, chances are they're gonna have alcohol, if they're gonna have alcohol, they're gonna have security. They're gonna have security, it might be just as simple as showing all of our police officers how to use this thing, and they can be the one that turns it on, turns it off. I don't know if that makes sense. But, like I said, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for a solution tonight, I just want to plant the seed tonight, that's simple, I just want to protect our equipment, but absolutely.
Two $30,000 investment that we need to protect it.
I'm inclined to say designated people, turn it on, turn it off.
To me, it should only be...
That's what I would do.
I would, I would be inclined to say you hire one of our employees, come in, turn it on, turn it off, and you can use it. Because, yeah, we don't want that.
Yeah, you, yeah, you really don't want to messing with anything other than turning it on and turning the volume.
We're actually talking more than $30,000.
True, yeah, that was the discounted price.
Yeah.
The last thing I wanted to do is blow those speakers off. Absolutely. That's my biggest concern. Limitations. Okay, so we can think about this and as we approach more... Let's think about this now. One other thing. I agree. You know, and the next thing is, is the Chamber of Commerce is installing a monitor. That's not our monitor, it's on our plaza, but it's the Chamber's monitor, and I brought it up at the Chamber board meeting yesterday, you know, for them to be thinking the same thing, you know, if someone's gonna have a wedding, class reunion, company picnic, whatever, and they want to put something up on that monitor, again, there will be... We'll be accommodating, Ken. What's that? We'll be accommodating. Oh, I know we will, but we still have to have rules. Yeah, yeah, I'll put together some rules. Yeah, yeah, I mean, the board yesterday, nobody seemed to object to that, but we'll need to have some rules and a fee, I would think, for use.
That would go to the chamber.
Yeah.
Because if they're DVD, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd say if they want to use it, then, you know, the chamber, you need...
There's, there's some rules that came along with part of the grant that we received, so I'll come up with something. That's right, yeah, I forgot about that. I'll come up with something on that thing. Okay. Okay, so plant that seed, maybe we'll follow up with that in a couple of weeks here on the use of the sound system. Cam, are you wanting to discuss Brielle?
Yeah.
Yeah. I tipped this out to you all earlier, but this is a follow-up. Our conversation started last week. We agreed to the hiring of, for again, lack of better terms, it's what she names it herself, the Creative Engagement Center Director. And I think just to provide some more clarity on roles, responsibilities, but also the distance with the contract, because Tim needs to write that up, and we need to get that if she's going to start here by June 1st. So following that, we did communicate with her. She was willing to accept, you know, as the contract stated. And just to review that, so this position, reporting to the mayor, beginning 1 June through the end of the year, we need to look at either renegotiating or working this into our budget for 2020 moving forward. But the idea was that 12 hours, or $12 an hour, essentially is the maximum of 50 hours a month. So that report weekly, the task, councilman, the hours worked to the mayor, you can see down there the responsibilities and then the immediate task. Those are things that need to be worked on now. What I really want to kind of focus on is this additional resources to make sure that she can start and be successful. So regardless of who's in that position, we need a point of contact. We need some way to get in touch with this entity, right? So what I'm recommending here is a positional email address. That does come with a cost. I don't remember what the actual cost is. Everybody has that.
Phyllis looked that up today.
So to secure just the email address.
Just to have a city email address basically costs us $443 a year.
And that's for every single one of us to have email address?
Yep. Yeah, with the county, we're on the county system, and there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different types of protection that they want us to have on our emails, so.
Then I really believe there needs to be a specific phone number. So if she's out representing us, as we're asking her to do, she ought to be able to tell people, here's how you get in contact with me, and it ought to be a Decatur official number.
A 724 number.
Not, you know, not her personal cell phone, not her personal email address, so.
We're finding that contacting CenturyLink is not an easy thing to do nowadays. If anyone has tried, you go through a series of queues and wind up in India.
But I'm wondering, is there a phone number that we have already?
That's the truth.
That's the truth.
They're all being used. The only one I can think of is maybe in the break room. Do you guys want to keep that one in there, though? Don't you guys use it when you have meetings?
We have. We've had conference calls in there. And we're also probably going to be putting a conference room upstairs, which we may need to move that up there, so I don't really...
Is there a phone number to the back office, which is the...
Yeah.
The two of us.
Transporter, the one back there?
Carbox, you got a phone back in your office?
No, I don't.
No. Sorry, we use that one. We have that.
Um...
See?
Sorry, Bill. We don't want people calling. Yeah, they're all pretty well used. Unless you know of one. I don't know.
I don't. I mean, Melissa's going to be moving. I mean, you took the ones that were in your office. Melissa's will go back there. If anything, we may be short one if, now that Erin's going to be over in Delano and planning it. That's what I'm saying, you're going to hire more people.
Can they add?
I hope so.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get a hold of CenturyLink for, is if we can add another line.
What did you find in trying to get a hold of CenturyLink? Did you leave a message or what?
We had an email for a lady that we always contact for billing, and she didn't respond. So we don't even know, she works there.
I've been chasing that for two months, too.
So eventually, we're going to have to...
I would say that's a good thing. Let's get her a phone line. I would agree with that.
Yeah, however it happens.
Whatever happens.
So we're going to have to have a phone line down there eventually. We can transfer that number, but if it's a hard line, it can be forwarded to her phone.
To her cell phone.
To her cell phone.
Excellent. So we agree with that.
Well, we have, they say we can only plug these and take them home and use them. They have line numbers on them. Yeah, you can. That's what they taught us or trained us on.
I wasn't here when they did that, so.
By the way, I have a feeling...
We just need to get a line.
Yeah, I have a feeling she may want to use her own laptop, but there isn't, there's an old one here, it's her plus.
I think Les has an extra.
Good.
So if that was so desired. But I also think that there's going to be, so then space. I think it may be as simple as, well, I don't know what the whole transition from Melissa and moving back there is, but either front, or even if she just needs to come in here and sit in City Hall and do some work. I have a feeling with her schedule, she's going to be out and about doing other things. But...
Between that room, Melissa's new office, my office, the break room.
Break room.
Conference room.
We got, so it's just access, right?
Plenty, yeah, plenty of that.
Access to Wi-Fi or whatever. The other big one here, so didn't realize that the email was such an expensive thing, but I have no idea what she's going to need initially to get started, right? But we've got to provide her some type of budget for supplies, not necessarily office equipment, but promotional type things that she's going to be working with to get the center going. So what I'm suggesting is that for now, we say it's a $500, and that's a reimbursement arrangement. And then any additional expenses above that would have to be presented to council for further approval. But it gets us started.
The only thing on that, Cam, is we just have to do everything through claim. So like if she goes out by something, just have her turn the bill in, and then we'll put it on a claim, and then you guys approve it and reimburse it.
Do we, excuse me, do we have to have her tied to a city email account? Can't we just have her get a Gmail account on our computer?
I don't, but to me, it's not about her. It's about the position. It's about the center.
Well, can it have the Gmail account be, start with not her name, but start with the position name? I mean, that's what we did for the Decatur Main Street. Mike uses for his email, decaturmainstreet@gmail or at gmail.com. That would, that would save money, but...
Artist lost.
Oh, yeah.
Decatur artist, or whatever.
That could be thought about.
I'm just saying, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me. I'm just trying to be very right.
I would be more inclined to agree with you two on that. Really, I would. I think...
I mean, what kind of security do we really need for her?
Well...
Or is it an identity thing? What is it?
It's an official email. I mean, it's official correspondence with, for a city physician, a city entity, right? If it's scheduling, if it's that type of thing for that, and I'm pretty certain all of our stuff is archived, right? So it's official correspondence. That's, I realize it's a contract worker, but it's a position...
It's a public letter.
The public record thing. So that's, to me, that's more the issue than, yeah, the cheap solution is just do a Gmail thing. But also, I would hope that if she's out there representing the city and giving information, that if she were to give a card of how to contact, that it would say decaturindiana.org, not Gmail. I think there's a professional piece of that. But I do think that it's also a official correspondence records issue as well. So that's why we pay as much as we do for an email address.
Protection.
Monitoring, tracking.
Well, some of it's just licenses, sort of Microsoft licensing, exchange server fees, storage for data and email.
That's a whole other topic.
Mimecast prevents spam emails from coming in.
Yeah, Mimecast is your security.
First of all, thank you, Cameron, for putting this together.
Thank you, yes.
And I agree with everything that you said, and I will follow this path. Whatever we choose to do, I was just trying to come up with thrifty ideas. You bang it out, you thaw it out, and I, we'd like to make a motion that we accept this proposal from Cam.
And I'll second that.
Hold on. So the proposal is for the city emails, for us to get a landline and put down there where she can forward it to her if need be. Use of a laptop if desired, and use of City Hall space for her own office needs, and up to $500 initial office expenses.
How does that work with...
That's what I said.
Does she have to spend her own money?
Yes. She goes out and buys something, she submits it to us.
She gets a claim.
And she gets reimbursed. We put it on a claim like this.
Just think of practical. She's a college girl that lives at her parents'. She had...
Yeah, but we can't just get out money. I mean, you have to do it through claim.
Well, if it's something that could be just ordered...
True. If it's something that can go through which column over here, stationaires?
Yeah, and she could put it on the city account. So it's a name.
Yeah.
She can do that.
Yeah, I'll work with her on that.
Because it'll all come out.
She's repaying to him.
So this'll all come out of your place for now.
He's got credit.
You have money.
Exactly. Yeah, I have plenty of money to supply.
I don't expect her to put out her money.
I agree. If need be, I can pay for it with my personal credit card, and I can get reimbursed, so.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second for approval of all this. Cam, does that cover everything?
I believe so. And I, by the way, I ran this by her, too, to make sure that this is in keeping with what the expectation was. And she said, absolutely, this is great.
What gives her some expectation, too?
Okay, good. All in favor?
Opposed.
We still, we really do need to come up with a name for that place, Cam.
Well, immediate task one.
A name for the art space. The Second Street Lofts is the apartments, okay?
Right. Because they just reached out to us, and we have to provide designs for a sign that goes up front. And we can't really do that till we have...
Project, first project.
No, we don't know where to go.
Logo.
Pretty arty stuff. Cool. Okay, that's that.
So one question I have, Cam. When you say immediate task, are these for immediate task, or are these immediate tasks for the city?
First.
Okay.
Scott, did you want to address counsel? I know you talked to us at the Board of Works, but I think it's good to actually have it for the record at the council meeting. Scott's here to represent the...
Union Township Lions Club.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Basically, I want to share with council and basically invite you all down. Every Thursday night between June and August, during the concert series, our Lions Club is going to be doing a new type of fundraiser. And it's basically selling ice cream products, ice cream treats individually wrapped. And each week, we are going to highlight a charity organization project that we've done in the past and will continue in the future. Our first one, which will be in two weeks, is Adam's Wells Press and Shelter. And you'll just have to come down to what we're doing the rest of the week. We do have two specific nights that we're going to change the rule just a little bit. Rather than giving a portion of our sales to these projects, two nights, we're going to give 100% of all sales and all donations to these projects. The first one is June 20th, and that is the Hanon Upman Ball Diamond renovation project. And in talking with Melissa, that is within the matching grant timeframe.
Ah, for patronicity.
Yes. So we're trying to time it so we're...
You double your donation, yeah.
And we're in the middle of Little League season, so we're trying to invite all Little League teams to come down instead of going to Zest or Dairy.
And Snack dab in the middle of ice cream season, yeah.
That's it. So, and along with that, we've got some donations through Dean Foods here. We're going to be providing us with some of the ice cream treats. We're getting some funding through Thrive It, through their Action Team Grants.
Cool.
So we're trying to double and triple and sometimes quadruple our efforts.
That's great.
The other one that we're going to have is the date is called July 4th. And we're going to be set up both at Madison Street for the concert and at Riverside Center for the fireworks themselves. And that will be a, for the fireworks, for next year.
Yep.
So we're kind of trying to pump for you for next year. And on that night, we're going to have a special treat, red, white, and blue popsicles.
There you go, yeah. Bomb house!
But...
And I want to thank you for your organization doing this. That's fantastic. You know, we've adopted the motto for the Hanon Upman project, it takes teamwork to build a community, and that's exactly what you're doing. You're teaming up with Team Decatur, so that's great.
And I know Les is very much aware of what we've done in the past, 20 years where we put in what we call dry hydrants. And I know he's used a few of them lately. And then Lenny is aware that we've given him money for his canine unit and Crime Stalkers. So that may be one of our other project nights, so that we're going to, I used to say the canines, the sheriff's department haven't gotten money from us yet, but we might do that with them one of the nights. Hopefully, we'll have all enough public influence and support. And the one thing we're going to try to do is, like on June 6th with Henske and Press Shelter, the following week is when we'll present the check back to them.
Cool.
We raised one week. We'll present the check next week, and it'll be a perpetual, okay, this is what we did last week, this is what your check is for this week, and hopefully, we can get good publicity out of it.
Right.
I do have a press release. I give one, I know to Melissa, I give one to the Decatur Democrat, WZBD, and to the...
Chamber.
Chamber.
Does Byrne have one? They will now.
They do now.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
We're willing to answer. Since it's our first year, I can give you all the answers.
It gives me an excuse to have ice cream. My wife doesn't like me, too, but it gives me an excuse.
We have many choices, so you can try one.
There you go. All right. Thanks, Scott. We have a, an amendment to an ordinance tonight, which is on our utilities. And the ordinance that we passed, not even a year ago, I don't think, about our landlord being responsible for utilities on their rentals. Cam, I'll let you take it away from here.
Okay. First of all, Phyllis, what's the next ordinance, five? House Bill 1347 was signed into law by Governor Wickham and, oh, Holcomb, long time ago.
HB 1347.
HB 1347.
Come on, Governor.
Governor Holcomb.
It's getting late.
I know. Anyway, maybe we need to get him back.
But...
Bobby likes that.
Could be a Friday night article right there.
But just that law was that there was an effort on the part of the state legislature to not allow cities to look to owners of properties for unpaid utility bills if it was billed to an occupant other than the owner. And that totally undid what we had worked on for a year and a half in addressing the And that totally undid what we had worked on for a year and a half in addressing the write-offs that occurred on an annual basis. So looking at the law and talking with AIM, it appears that we need to beef up our ordinance by specifically identifying that our billing records reflect that both the property owner and the occupant are responsible for the utility bill. And that we basically define what a customer is. And it's really by definition, under what I'm proposing, either the owner of the property or the occupant who's been authorized by the owner to be billed. And our ordinance already says that it's joint and several liability and we're making it very clear that there are multiple customers. Because the reason that's important is the way the language of the bill is worded is that if there's more than one person that is responsible for the bill, then this language doesn't restrict the city from looking to the owner for payment. And so we're going to make certain and clarify in our ordinance that there are more than one party responsible for this bill. So that's the nature of this ordinance. It will be ordinance number 2019-5. And I would entertain a motion to introduce it for reading on, for first reading.
I'll make a motion then to place ordinance 2019-5 on its first reading by short title only.
Say it. Motion and a second to place ordinance, excuse me, 2019-5 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-5, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city, Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 50 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of 2015 as supplementary regarding customer accounts.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-5 on its first reading.
Say it. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-5 on its first reading. Phil's would have roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Follack.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2019-5 on its second reading by short title only.
Say it. Have a motion and a second for placing ordinance 2019-5 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-5, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city, Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 50 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of 2015 as supplementary regarding customer accounts.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-5 on its second reading.
Say it. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-5 on its second reading. Have whatever roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Follack.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we.
Suspend.
Suspend the rules and go ahead and pass it on its third reading.
I'll second. By short title only.
By short title only.
Thank you. Always important, most important part of action. Have a motion and a second. To introduce ordinance 2019-5 on its third rating, reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-5, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city, Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 50 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of 2015 as supplementary regarding customer accounts.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-5 on its third reading.
Say it. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-5 for its third and final reading. Phil's would have roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Follack.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. Ordinance 2019-5 has been adopted. And at this time, I made this comment earlier when we were talking about it, I would just like to give ourselves kudos for being proactive on all of this. It was a year and a half ago at a Board of Works meeting when we were writing off roughly $25,000 of unpaid utility bills that Greg Koschel on the Board of Works made the comment, this is enough, we need to do something about this. With Kevin Hackman's research on buying new software and Tim's hours and hours of writing this ordinance, Decatur has been proactive and we're ahead of a lot of other communities in making this happen. So I know that the people down at AIM in Indianapolis are kind of referring to Decatur as a model community on being at the forefront of this. So kudos to us. That's that. I think that is everything I really have on the agenda, with the exception of I wanted to report that it was in the newspaper. I'm just grateful publicly to Rod Reinkenberger for all the help he's given the city. I call him Rockstar Rodney. And we need to get him down here at some point in time and thank him face to face, all of us. But we've bought out 74 homes and with his help, we're going to now be up to 92 homes. Plus, taking out the Evergreen Assisted Living Facility, which is a place that Jeremy and some of our firemen less and guys would vouch that we have placed more sandbags at that facility than anywhere in Adams County. And it's not going to have to happen any longer. So that's great news and thanks to Rod. Thanks to United States Congressman Jim Banks for stepping up and helping us to get through this. It's all good. Appreciate it. Speaking of Evergreen Assisted Living, Les has talked to us about out at Hananutman. There's a fireman's water ball court located at the far east end. We met with, Jeremy and I met with Joel and Item at the hospital earlier this week, I think, no, last week. And we will be moving that water ball court out to the parking lot area of Evergreen Assisted Living on the very front side of it there. So we won't lose our water ball court. And most importantly, as far as a water source for the water ball court, whenever they use it, they don't use it that often, but whenever they do, they're going to put a hydrant in the pond there.
Put a dry hydrant in the pond.
In the pond and just use pond water for spraying, fighting the ball.
And we also do quite a bit of our split water training. We do boat ops and stuff at the pond. Allow us with our department to do that. And guys are really innovative. They've come up with a way to offer that concrete pier to make current that you have swim into using plate lines. So we're thinking there's going to be a lot of things we can do there that we can do.
And I think before demo ever happens there, which is going to be months down the road yet, but I think you may even be able to do some kind of a training exercise there.
There's, when that comes about, the lines we're all working on. I think law enforcement, they're going to want to do some things in there. Probably a good place for the RTS with that shooter plan could do some training. So yeah, it'll get used. And we'll make sure it doesn't look like it's being used until it's ready to go down, so.
Okay.
It'll be good.
While you're talking, let's go to the department heads. Do you have anything else?
Uh, well, last Saturday, beautiful Saturday, the first one for a long time. Our 20th Annual Golf Outing. You know, each year we support Hoosier Burn Camp. Supported our scholarship foundation for a number of years. You give away two scholarships and substantial amount each year from the outing. The Hoosier Burn Camp, but this year, our scholarship is fully funded and we took a year off and decided this year that the second recipient is going to be Hananutman Ball Diamond. And so here in the next couple of weeks, the Decatur Volunteer Fire Department will be presenting the Hananutman project with a check for $3,025 for their share of. It's just, it's a great outing. We had a lot of fun and we turn away teams, but. Kudos to the volunteers and that committee. I mean, they just, they've made that thing better every year.
Jeremy, are you like the president of the volunteers or something or other? Because you really seemed to be involved out there the other day.
The last two years, I was head of the golf outing committee.
He gets a lot, I mean, yeah, he heads it up and he gives a lot of help, a lot of guys. They cook.
Oh, yeah.
There was a committee of my last year.
I played on it for the first time ever this year and I'll say it was a lot of fun. It was really well, it was very well organized. From a breakfast to kick it off to a sandwich when you made the turn and a lot of fun. Good door prizes. Lenny won a door prize.
Tom won in the fire department's door prize. Was probably a little part of the day, but you know.
You hear about that, Bob? Lenny went out here a couple of months ago, bought himself a brand new Weber grill.
Well, you'd always buy something.
Yeah, but a nice Weber grill. Guess what? He won one exactly like it at the fireman's golf outing. Exactly like it.
You going to do it like that at Hananutman?
I won't put any prices ticket price and he's still.
His son's going to get him a nice grill, he thought. Well, he tells, he says, he's going to give it to his son. He only spent $10 on it, buy the ticket. And he turns around and says, my daughter's birthday's coming up, I'm going to give her 25, so she's feeling like she's making out.
I did have one last, one other thing. John mentioned the fire and removal and replacement. So I just want to kind of remind people that we do have an additional way to be warned. And I want to encourage everybody to go to Adams County's website, sign up for, I'm not sure if it's called Everbridge on there, but it's an emergency alert. You know, firemen or not, we really want to get people signed up. And we're starting to notice that on the map, there are some people out in rural communities who are starting to sign up. And you can sign up for as many alerts as you want, or the minimum, I think, is severe thunderstorm and tornadoes, the minimum you can get. But go to the county's website, you really want to get, right? People signed up on that. Very valuable tool that we got, bringing through EMA to fund and looking at another one to fund it for one more year, so.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin? Don?
Hey, most of them.
Don's been up.
Lean and sewers.
Lean and sewers. Leonard?
Monday, this past Monday, Officer Nathan Hunter and Officer Daniel Gill passed Alia Entrez's name. So I want to credit Track Bussy, our officer's kind of like our physical guy, so keep him in shape. So they will be forwarding to the academy for the next 16 weeks, next Tuesday.
There we go. Carrie? Nothing tonight? Yeah, I hear you. Mr. Bill? Jeremy?
Just a couple of things, sir. I'll be quick. Bob?
Thank you.
Kind of behind the scenes, I've been working with Endot finalizing Community Crossings and also our annual paving. A few of you have saw this, not all, but I just wanted to pass it out quick so you understand the community impact, the benefit that will be going on this summer paving, doing the street paving and such. Explain how we are getting to the numbers that I'm showing here. Okay, on the first one through 18, that was the projects that were applied for on two applications through Community Crossings. If you look down through the portion, it was a total 650, 780, 320. Our portion, it's 162, 695, 80, which is well under what we budgeted. So Cam, I do come up with a budget. Endot's portion, you know, they gave us the 650, but Endot's portion of that's only the 488, 087, 40. So Endot will be getting a portion back. The second set, the one through eight, is just our, some of our normal paving projects that we would do. It's not all of them. I want to make sure that we don't overrun them on the first 18 or these eight potentially overrun and we have to pay it 100%. So there may be some smaller portions, some smaller little projects going forward. But if you go down to the category three, this is where it's really impressive. Total for both packages, $891,191. Normally, folks, we only pay about $200,000 a year. This Community Crossings program has been wonderful.
It's a winner.
Once we follow that through all the processes we got through the first time, as long as the money stays, I think.
We keep.
We need to keep going at it.
Yeah.
My estimate, and this kind of tells you how aggressive these bids are getting, my estimate was 1.3 million. And we come in at 891,000 for only, so the paving companies are getting real aggressive because there's so much work out there right now. So if you kind of go back through the numbers here, Endot pays the 488, 087, 40. City portion for the CCMGs, Community Crossing Matching Grant Program, 162, 695, 80. My M V H money's 240, 408.
Great. Well done.
That's just.
Quite good for our budget.
These projects will start probably the end of June, right around from now to the end of June. I'll have a stipend today, this just a general report of what's going on. And I go through these as I pass them out. If you guys have any questions, holler at me. But the Legion restroom project was postponed due to the weather, obviously. The weather's just been terrible for everybody. With the room we have down there right now, I don't want to cause a big issue with mud and such. So talking with Mr. Arnold, we decided that we would hold off. He's looking to start that project probably next Wednesday. At the same time, Lenny does the footers for the wall, or for the restroom, he's going to do the wall project also or start all the footers for the wall. I had said earlier and Carrie alluded to it, this weather has been actually impossible. We're doing our best mowing and doing our best in the parks, but a few weeks back, I had to just pull everybody. We were starting to cause too many issues, too many problems with brand new mowers and tearing the properties apart. If you get any complaints, we are out. We're out as much as we can be out, but I just can't be tearing everything up, you know, I'm just trying to mow. So hopefully it dries up here before long and we can get back at it.
Well, I think most people will understand because they're in the same situation.
Not all. We've had some really irate people.
Really?
Yep.
The swimming pool is.
I said most.
Is ready to rock and roll at woke this Saturday at 1:00. It'll be a little chilly, but anybody that wants to get down and start swimming, they're. Give me a list of the irate people. I'll put their names in. So in kind of closing, we've been talking about the railroad tracks. Railroad tracks is always a conversation every four, five, six years. I met with Bungy a few times, the railroad, actually had a lunch being a week ago, we went and walked the tracks. The condition of those crossings are a lot more deteriorated than what it appears. Bungy has taken a proactive approach, making permanent repairs. Obviously, budgeting wise, it's not going to happen right away. We have talked and we're going back and forth with conversation with myself and the railroad DM, Scott Erickson from Bungy, on going through and making some temporary repairs to the asphalt just to make them drivable and rideable, if you will. We have had some damaged vehicles this winter due to the rough tracks, just to make it, for it's feasible on the Second Street Crossings and the Washington Street Crossings. The Second Street Crossings, when that time comes, that will be a very intensive repair and replacement. They're looking at long term, which is a good sign. We talked about some different things in the meeting that I'm not going to repeat here, but they're looking long term on the Monix crossings. With that, it takes some time and it takes some money, so.
Sure.
I'm going to continue to work with them as best we can.
Thank you.
To try to get those straightened out, but there's safety concerns that they have. I need to talk with Lenny on a couple of things, on the side note, outside of here with some concerns that they have also.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jeremy. I do have one, a couple of things to touch on. One is the Hananutman project, our capital campaign. We're up over $650,000 now. A little over a week ago, I met with Scott Erickson from Bungy and they donated $50,000. So that's a field sponsorship. So out of the six fields, we now have names for four of the fields. So we only have two more fields to name. And I think we have some people in the mix. I think we may have three or four people in the mix. Try to get those. in the mix, I think we may have three or four people in the mix to try to get those two fields. So, I think that's all gonna work out in the long run. Also, with the patronicity campaign coming up, where we can raise $50,000 and have, have all of that matched, uh, I mean, I really do think that, you know, we may not make our million dollars, but I would venture to say we're gonna be between 750 and 800. And, uh, again, I encourage people and businesses locally to, to give to the project, it's a great project. Um, and then lastly, uh, my last fundraiser, we've had Mercy Beatle concerts, a couple of them, and we've, we've had Paul McCartney raffles, whatever, but now the last fundraiser that I'm having for Hannah Nutman is the first, Marist Golf Outing, and that's June 28th. Uh, Kevin Hackman is working with me, along with Melissa, and Anne Razow, Kate Shum, and Luke Ainsworth. That's kind of our, our committee, and we're meeting again tomorrow. But, uh, we've sent out invitations to pretty much all the vendors that we work with here in the city, as well as, uh, we've emailed it to the chamber who's been gracious enough to forward that on to all the local chamber members, and so we're getting, we're hoping to have up to 36 teams that day. It's June 28th. And, how much is it, Kevin? 300 bucks a team?
300 a team.
$300 a team. $150 to sponsor a hole, so, uh, give us some ink on that, Bob, and we appreciate it. Any questions, let me know. Yeah?
Yeah.
And Jim? That's all I have. Councilmembers, you have anything?
How many teams is this thing?
We can have up to 36 teams.
Okay, I sent an email out to y'all earlier this week about working with volunteers, and I referenced the, uh, we're in Alphora, the downtown plan that we adopted in 2015. But, for your references, the back, back portion of it, which is the task list, okay? So, I printed that off for you, um, and I think it's just something we ought to look at, maybe, a lot of these things are done, right? A lot of the projects have been completed, but if we can look at this and identify some things and say, you know what, this is something that needs to be volunteer-driven, and we can reach out with the Main Street and come up with a game plan of how we want them to tackle that project, okay? So...
Main Street has been keeping that though in...
Right.
In, been working with that and referencing that.
Oh, I'm also, you've already had the discussion, but Chapter 6 was the...
Design stuff, but it's, it's there.
Good man.
Chapter 11 is the task list.
Good man, good man. Anything else from any of the councilmembers?
Um, I would just like to say, uh, I think we did a pretty nice job by securing this camera and renting a vac truck. I know that, how many feet have you gotten cleaned out?
Uh, 7,000.
Pushing 7,000 feet. These guys, I see them on the road, I've stopped and checked it out, and I've seen the things that they've been pulling out of these sewers, and, I mean, this is cool. I think, I think this is a very proactive approach to how we're taking, tackling this situation. And thanks, Carrie, for your support, your, you know, from the sewer department to help, help out too. I know they've had an employee over there helping out some, and it's, it's been pretty good. I think it's a great project, and it's, I appreciate you guys taking a proactive approach toward this, it's huge.
Yep, thanks, Craig. Anything else? Tim? Phyllis?
No, thank you.
Bob?
Probably.
Probably.
As a citizen...
Yes, sir.
A little brings us up, since we're talking, and we got Bungie and railroad laws together, we do something, anything at all about this, the fire...
Horatio?
The train, western thing. Yeah. It's incredible.
I, I know it is.
It's just totally incredible. And there's some of them that go ding-dang, and there's some of them that go brrr. I've counted eight, 10 seconds sometimes. There's no way in the world they're switching back and forth.
I've counted longer than 10 seconds.
Yeah. And you'll get one, and you get there, and you get there, and you get there, and soon you start opening the windows now.
Yeah, I know that there's some, you know, every time they come to an intersection, I think it's, they're supposed to do two short honks, a long honk, and a short honk or something. I forget how it is, but...
That's if they're going fifty miles an hour.
Yeah, and, but, but Horatio, the hornblower, as you refer to him, you know, he's barely moving, he's perching an intersection, so, yeah, actually, I think the long honk is supposed to be while he's going through the intersection. Well, if it takes him 20 seconds to get through the intersection, he honks the whole way.
And if it's not normal, if it's not trains going up and down, it's switching back and forth.
And it's generally the second and third shift guy that wants to be the, the expert. I agree with you.
Have horn, will you?
And I, I, I talked to the railroad, and they pretty much just said, he's doing his job.
I'm just worried, cause Bungie could put a little pressure on.
Hey, we talked to the people from Huntington, Bob, and they said that the railroad agrees, and that Bungie would agree, uh, they have no way of policing? In other words, it doesn't get policed, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Know what I mean?
Yeah, so nobody's gonna, yeah, yeah. Well, if the railroad agrees, it...
They won't police.
It's just incredible.
Yep, I agree, Bob.
Yeah, I'm three blocks away, that's where people live, right on all the tracks. I'm probably...
Yeah, we, we hear it all the time.
Yeah, keep it clear, yeah, far away as you are. I understand why you're talking to the railroad depot, man.
I just made a note of it, I'm, I'm, Scott Erickson. Okay. We got any bills to pay, guys?
Motion to pay the claims.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pay the claims. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.